Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you to our special administration and our Board of Education for welcoming us to the evening tonight to showcase and celebrate some of the fantastic students that we have in our building. The first set of students that I look to recognize tonight are our students who have earned National Merit Commended Students status. For these members of the class of 2026 who have earned this recognition for their academic excellence, these students have been proudly named National Merit Commended Students, an honor that is awarded to those four of the top two to three percent of students in the entire country of the PFAA. Out of more than twenty-four million attendees nationwide, only about thirty-four thousand students have entered the competition. Their hard work, dedication, and diligence for learning have placed them among the highest academic achievement, an accomplishment that deserves celebrating and admiring. Congratulations to these wonderful students and their families. I'd like to reference the four students who have earned this recognition. William Barrios Dow. Megan Piara. Eric Green. And Matthew Tomacow. Congratulations to these students. At the end of my presentation here, I'll wrap all of these students come up for a moment. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our student government leadership who are here with us tonight. As a principal of this high school, I rely heavily on these successful students to be role models and play an active role to enhance the student experience in our building. I thank them very much for their service, their leadership, and our commitment to our school. I'll start with our student government team. Eric Green, President. Declan O'Toole, Vice President One. Megan Piara, Vice President Two. Will Flarkey, Secretary. Elena Rivera, Treasurer. And Callie Mann, School Board Liaison. I'd also like to recognize the class presidents for each of the greens in our building. Senior Class President Christian Chan. Junior Class President Addison Wilkins. Sophomore Class President Catherine Ballpelle. And freshman Class President Matthew McKeon. Congratulations to these wonderful students and thank you for serving our school. At this time, I would ask all students to be recognized if they can come up and take a picture. Thank you.
Dr. Farland, you good?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the invitation to sing tonight. We will be performing "With a Spark" by Caterina Gibbon. Through the curricular richness of this piece and the healthy learning environment of our ensemble class, we are able to celebrate and support many different ways of learning. We've looked at the poetry, studied the composer's intent, collaborated and cooperated with each other in order to allow each other to grow in individual ways. We've talked about the marriage of music literacy and communication, mathematically mapped out polyrhythms that this piece utilizes, worked within our ensemble community to foster belonging, talked about the sociological and psychological aspects of the lyrics and of music making, and we have strengthened our perseverance muscles and performing techniques. While most of these students will go on in professions outside of the arts, they will most certainly take with them the many ways of learning achieved through our ensemble class and through our music making. And in honor of school board recognition, we offer this performance to say thank you. Thank you for supporting our ensemble classes and arts education. You made this performance possible tonight. You are the fuel to ignite our flames, and we honor your dedication to the RBC schools by showing you what you are doing directly impacts our students in such a beautiful, long-lasting, and important way. Thank you.
(Singing) Spark flicker flame, spark flicker flame. Spark flicker flame, spark flicker flame. Spark flicker flame, spark flicker flame. Spark is your spark. A flicker of flame. Spark flicker 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 flame. And spark flicker flame. Born in a world of boundless skies where sea and sun collide. We're made to provide just the dreams from light and rise, rise. Till we know. Till we find a fire that is our own. Till we know. Till we know the heart that guides us on. Born from a spark, flicker of flame. A flicker of flame. A spark flicker, spark flicker flame. Will guide the way. Just listen. Listen. Just obey. Feel your presence. Find the way. And soon you'll know. The power of the daily progress. And soon you'll know. The power of the now stressed hand. Feel it grow. The shape of the time. All it takes is a spark to set the tides of change. A flicker flame. A flicker flame. Now we know. A flicker flame. Now we know. Now we know our life. Spark flicker flame. Spark flicker flame. A spark flicker flame. A spark flicker flame. To set the world ablaze.
Dr. Gavin, did the cross-country team virtually breathe?
Thank you very much, Dr. Farland. The students were so grateful by just being here. Your beautiful talent has been absolutely astounding. Thank you so much. And I'd like to thank our president, my last name is Elizabeth, for all of the support and love. If anyone wants to take her picture, just leave it there. Anything, anything, who will walk over to the house. And if anyone has still hold a new book or anything else, thank you so much. Thank you.
You want me to go back up? Or?
Yeah. I think all of them.
I think he's checking it right now. Got a gun? Shouldn't say that, let's go.
...to support and enrich our children, our schools, and our community. We know how much time, energy, and care each of you dedicates to this work. What stands out most is not just your commitment to addressing the immediate needs of our district, but also the thoughtful way you continue to shape a shared vision for our future. That balance truly makes a difference.
As a small token of our appreciation, we partnered with SST to create custom engraved commuter cups. We hope you enjoy them and that they serve as a small reminder of how much your work is valued and appreciated. Thank you again for all that you do. There are so many exciting things happening across our district right now, and the future is looking so bright. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Miki and Meg, and all the units of the PTA, and all the PTA membership, and SST. All right, external auditor's presentation is next.
Hello, everyone. So tonight, we met with the audit committee to go over the financial reports as well as the audit. We issued what was called a cleaner unmodified opinion on the financial statements as well as the actual classroom reports. At this time, we issued the single audit as well, which is your federal compliance power. We can't issue that report for a couple of months until the federal government releases the information that they need about the shutdown. Push that back a bit. But overall, the district is in a very clean position. We did not have any findings, no internal control findings that you have to be aware of. At the general fund level, there was a small decrease in the fund balance from the prior year of approximately $251,000. So overall, clean audit, everything went very smoothly. So I really want to thank Jackie and her team for facilitating everything and making it very possible to get everything done on time.
May I just explain in a little bit more detail the federal delay and the shutdown?
Yeah, so essentially, in order to complete the audit, the federal government has to release a document called the Compliance Supplement, which they typically release in late July, early August every year. They didn't release it yet. It's the latest we have ever seen it. I've never seen it get even close to the end of September. But then the federal government shutdown also occurred, so it's essentially right now impossible to know when they're going to release that. But after that's out, we're going to issue that. It's essentially just administrative backlog, but it'll be a quick turnaround.
And then you'll be for us again, brief us whenever we need to be briefed on at that point?
Yeah, everything will be completed pretty much probably a week after it comes out.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Barry. I want to give an update on the high school auditorium air conditioning situation. We have received a quote with a better price. We estimate the total cost to replace the unit to be about $450,000. If we wanted to purchase the air conditioner this year, this is how we could do it. Through some hard work and dedication, we have secured $150,000 in additional funding from Judy Griffiths. She has been an outstanding partner to our school district. The second component we would do in addition to the $150,000 in additional funding from Judy, we would reallocate money in the budget that has been allocated right now for a covert kindergarten playground. And then we would utilize $145,000 in undesignated fund balance. This evening, we have a resolution for the board to consider. If the resolution were passed, we would file the plans with the state, bid the project, award the bid, order the AC unit, and look to install everything. Again, if everything breaks our way, that means everything goes right. That means the state approves everything. That means the order is there, all the materials are there. We would look to install the new unit sometime during the April break, so to have as minimal disruption to our students as possible. At this point, since the weather has cooled, temps in the auditorium have been hovering between 62 and 65 degrees each day. As such, we will look to keep both the high school play and the high school musical, which is at the end of March this year, at the high school. And hopefully, with everything going well, get the AC installed prior to our May and June events. In terms of communication, we have met with the students of the Drama Guild, the officers of the Drama Guild, and parent representatives of both the Drama Guild and sponsors of the arts. We will continue to conduct these meetings and update the public so that everyone is aware of the steps we are taking to address the issue and always include students in part of the discussion. If for any reason we need to change venues for the events, we will continue to update the public and all of the representatives I have just talked about. Based on our conversations with the architects and the vendors, we feel that it's highly likely that the unit is replaced prior to our May and June events. Please know that we will be updating the public throughout the process. I am also pleased to share an exciting update with our community. On Sunday, October 26 at 1:00 p.m., we will be holding a special ceremony to unveil a new championship sign on Sunrise Highway, a project made possible through the partnership with the Village of Rockville Center, Malloy University, and our school district. This new sign will proudly showcase the achievements of our New York State, Nassau County, and Long Island champions, and celebrates the hard work of our students, athletes, and teams. We are especially grateful to Malloy University for funding the sign and to Mr. Scott Davis for leading the project from start to finish. The event will bring together a wide range of community members, including varsity coaches, team captains, booster club members, alumni, and local media as well. To ensure safety, the Village has arranged parking in Field 12 and will provide a crossing garden police presence during the ceremony. We invite the entire Rockville Center community to join us as we honor their proud tradition.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the update, and thank you to Scott Davis. I am going to make a motion to pull K-8 at this point for a vote. I'll make the motion. Do I have a sec? K-8 is the approval of Resolution Regarding Air Conditioning Project. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this point, I don't think this is working. I'm just going to speak. Sorry. The light is working, but I'll just use my teacher voice.
So at this point, we have elementary data presentation, Mr. Gavin?
We do. I'd like to welcome to the microphone. They will also have to use their principal voices. All of our principals from our elementary teams, they're going to update the community on our progress this year.
May I just say, they're recording, and they will match it to the video later on tonight. Thank you all. So it'll be everybody be able to stand in the room.
Great. Thank you.
Perfect. Not working?
Just talk loud.
Okay. Thank you for having us back tonight to provide you with an update of our 2024 and 2025 data. I'm Jen Paschrell, the principal at Watson, and we are here tonight as a team immense pride to share with you our collaborative efforts that we feel have really transformed teaching and learning across all five of the elementary buildings. Our unified approach has really created a powerful synergy where our commitment to students as well as to teaching and learning has been the driving force of all the work we've done. Each of the elementary administrators, along with teachers from our buildings, participated last year on the Strategic Planning Committee. That work has been instrumental in helping our entire team lean into the district's mission. Through its development and guidance, our teachers and our staff have embraced a culture of excellence that can be found in every classroom, in every lesson, and in every interaction with our students through a strong focus and attention on enhancing student outcomes and opportunities. Elementary administrators, student-level data teams, our work with MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, have all established a framework that ensures every child receives the targeted support that they need. This systematic approach, combined with ongoing curriculum initiatives, has created environments for our students and teachers to really flourish. We continue our work looking at multiple measures of assessment, and we stay true to our process of reflection, inquiry, and action. And we are excited to share our results, which are rooted in a trajectory heading in the right direction. And we are thrilled with the payoff of all of the efforts of our staff and students. But we recognize that our work is not done. At this time, I'd like to have Ms. Michelle DiMartino come up to speak about F and P benchmarks.
Good evening. The Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System continues to be used as a comprehensive tool designed to provide our teachers with a one-on-one measure of a student's reading abilities and development over time. The system utilizes a series of leveled fiction and nonfiction texts graded along a text gradient from A, the easiest, to Z, the most complex. The determination of a text level is a holistic process based on ten factors that systematically increase in difficulty across the gradient. These key factors include genre, text structure, content, themes and ideas, language and literary features, and the core elements like sentence complexity and vocabulary. The system allows teachers to systematically observe, document, and quantify specific reading behaviors, including accuracy, fluency, and comprehension, which is essential in determining an instructional reading level. The true value of the Benchmark Assessment System, however, lies within the qualitative data gathered during this dedicated one-on-one observation time. The direct interaction moves beyond simple scoring to provide a diagnostic window into the student's application of the core literacy components, often referred to as the Big Six: phonological awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, comprehension, and oral language. By conducting a running record and analyzing a student's miscues or errors, the teacher gains unique insight into how the student is decoding words, utilizing context, and making meaning, data that is impossible to glean from group assessments. This analysis of strategic action allows the teacher to pinpoint specific strengths and weaknesses across these pillars, ensuring instruction is responsive and targeted. This data is used to plan effective small group instruction. It identifies the text complexity level at which a student could read with approximately 90 to 94% accuracy, coupled with satisfactory comprehension, while receiving teacher guidance and support. This zone, often referred to as the just right zone, is where maximum literacy growth occurs, aligning with the principle of Zone of Proximal Development. Teachers can select texts that provide enough challenge to encourage the development of new reading strategies without leading to frustration or breakdown, thereby enabling meaningful and targeted literacy development throughout the school year. This benchmark data that you see here is for the F and P reading levels from fall 2024 to spring 2025, and it indicates a strong positive trend in student achievements across all grade levels. and it indicates a strong positive trend in student achievements across all grade levels, first through fifth. The overall trend shows significant reading growth as every grade level demonstrated an increase in percentage of students who meet or exceed the F and P reading expectations by spring of 2025. The most substantial progress was observed in first grade, which increased its proficiency rate by 11 percentage points from 67% in the fall to 78% in the spring. By the end of the year, second grade achieved the highest overall performance with 82% of students meeting or exceeding their instructional reading level. This uniform improvement across the gradient suggests effective literacy instruction throughout the primary and intermediate grades. And now I invite out Anna McGovern to talk about the NWEA.
Hi, everyone. The NWA is an adaptive, computerized assessment that our students take three times a year in both reading and math. This data is shared with parents on the parent portal, used by classroom teachers and service providers, and discussed and analyzed at team meetings. We also use this data to inform and strengthen our instructional practices that contribute to student performance. Our students in Rockville Center consistently outperform national averages. They have higher median scores than the national average, meaning that more of our students score in the average to above-average range and far less score in the low-average to low range. This graphic compares Rockville Center's NWA scores to national averages at both the fall and spring benchmarks in reading. As you can see here, our scores in reading are well above the national average, indicating strength in instructional practices and literacy skills at all five elementary buildings at all grade levels. Not only did we outperform the national average, our students also showed overall growth from the fall to the spring at each grade level. This graphic compares Rockville Center NWA scores to national averages in both the fall and spring in math. Rockville Center's NWA math results similarly exceed the national average at all grade levels. This data demonstrates strong mathematical proficiency across grade levels. And once again, not only did we outperform the national averages, our students showed overall growth from the fall to the spring at each grade level. As you may have noticed, kindergarten is currently not represented on our NWA data because they participate in the MAP reading fluency test, which is not currently nationally normed to show comparison. The MAP reading fluency used by our kindergarten students is aligned with the science of reading, measuring the following: listening comprehension, picture vocabulary, phonological awareness, phonics, and word recognition. This tool assesses our students' individual skills while also providing early identification of students needing targeted reading interventions. I will now pass the microphone to Mr. Zapia, who will be highlighting our students' performance on the New York State assessments.
Good evening. Students in grades three through five participate in the New York State assessments for both ELA and math. Our fifth graders across the state also participate in the New York State Science Assessment, and they're doing so for the second consecutive year. In Rockville Center, we are fortunate to have various data analysis tools at our disposal. These tools help us identify strengths and areas for improvement in our instruction. With this information, district and building teams will continue to engage in meaningful discussions and action plans focused on increasing student performance. This graphic compares participation in both ELA and math state tests between the 23-24 and 24-25 school years. We are very pleased in recent years that the vast majority of students have taken the New York State assessments. Participation remained consistently high, which in turn strengthens the reliability of the data we use to guide instructional decisions. Our state education department scores students on a scale from one to four. Levels three and four indicate proficiency or mastery of grade level standards, while levels one and two indicate partial or below proficiency within grade level standards. This graphic features bar graphs comparing the percentage of Rockville Center students in grades three through five to their counterparts across the region and the state with regards to proficiency and mastery levels, those levels three and four students. It should be stated that Nassau County is the highest performing region in the state. Notably, Rockville Center students indicated by the blue bars outperform both regional and state peers indicated by the red and orange bars in both ELA and math at all three grade levels, which is a great source of pride for us in Rockville Center. The next two slides I'll present display charts comparing student performance in both ELA and math across two school years. With first regarding ELA, between the 23-24 and 24-25 school years, New York State ELA assessments, Rockville Center showed strong improvement across all grades. The percentage of students meeting proficiency, levels three and four, increased at all three grade levels at all five schools. Fewer students scored a level one, and more reached the highest performance band, level four, especially in grade five, where level four score is nearly doubled. Rockville Center continues to outperform the regional averages by 10 to 13 percentage points, with the proficiency gap narrowing slightly in third and fourth grades. When analyzing data, it's important to look beyond overall grade level results and consider how the same group of students performs from year to year. Cohort analysis shows that students made meaningful progress as they advanced from one grade to the next, with each demonstrating notable gains in the percentage of students reaching proficiency or mastery levels of performance. Overall, the 24-25 results reflect meaningful academic growth, stronger high-level performance, and sustained regional excellence. Let's now turn our attention to the state tests with regard to math. Between the 23-24 and 24-25 school years, Rockville Center students demonstrated steady overall growth with regards to the New York State math assessments. Third-grade results showed an increase in the number of students achieving proficiency, with more students reaching the mastery level and fewer performing at the lowest level. Fourth-grade students maintained strong overall proficiency while showing notable improvement among students performing at the highest level. Fifth-grade results reflected similar positive trends with gains across the proficient and mastery performance levels. Once again, I want to take a moment to highlight our cohort data. When examining how the same group of students performed from one year to the next, we see continued positive trends. Our 23-24 third-grade cohort showed growth in overall proficiency as they advanced to fourth grade, while our 23-24 fourth-grade cohort maintained a strong proficiency rate as they moved on to fifth grade, with an increase in the number of students performing at a level four. This indicates ongoing progress, particularly among our higher-achieving students. Across all grades, Rockville Center continued to outperform the regional average by three to eight percentage points. Overall, our 24-25 results indicated fewer students in the lowest performance levels and more demonstrating mathematical proficiency. This slide compares fifth-grade New York State science results over the last two years. The 23-24 school year marked the first time our fifth-grade students across the state participated in this assessment. The 24-25 fifth-grade New York State science results showed substantial improvement compared to the previous year. A higher percentage of students achieved proficiency, with strong growth across all performance levels. Notably, fewer students performed below standards, while more reached the highest level of achievement. In addition, Rockville Center's performance continued to outpace regional results by an even wider margin, demonstrating significant progress in both overall proficiency and mastery among fifth-grade students. This graphic presents a bar graph that highlights where Rockville Center fifth-grade students compare to their counterparts across the state and the region. Here we see Rockville Center fifth-grade students scoring at proficiency or mastery at 80%, which is higher than both the state and national averages, and regional averages, I should say, sorry. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to my colleague, Mr. Jim Duffy, principal of Wilson School, who will discuss our ongoing work in data analysis and next steps in our continuous improvement plan. Thank you.
So what does all this data, what do we do with all this data? So the first thing that we do is we're going to use the data to make informed decisions about our students. We use the test that we just spoke of, the F and P, the NWA, New York State tests, along with classroom assessments, teacher input, to make decisions on students who may need additional services, to make decisions about what book clubs or what book groups students should be in. We use this data to communicate with parents how their children are doing in school, and we use the data to help track student progress. We use the data to evaluate our curriculum focus, which would mean what programs we're going to use and focus on, timelines, and focuses in our units of study. We also use the data to make informed decisions about our instructional practices, which would include professional development and training for our teachers. What does the data tell us? The data tells us, I think, that our process is working, that evaluating what we're doing, trying to make improvements on our curriculum, on our instruction, and on all the things that we do across all five buildings, working together, our MTSS plan, supporting our students, is all showing strong results and a great experience for our students. It also tells us that we're a high-achieving school district. No matter where we compare ourselves, whether it's to the nation, to the state, to the region, our scores are strong in ELA, our scores are strong in math, our scores are strong in science. And it also tells us that we still have work to do, that we need to continue our process, we need to continue to make improvements, and we need to continue to make changes to give the students the best experiences possible. Specifically, when we look at the data this year, particularly from the state data, in ELA, we saw that we need to work on our writing. Extended responses, constructed responses, we still have work to do there. We still have work to do around more understanding of complex informational text. We did better in fictional texts, but we have work to do still with our informational texts. And students' capacity for building vocabulary and meaningful understanding of words. In math, we need to work on solving complex word problems. Also, more writing and more explanation in our constructive responses, and a focus on fractions in grades three to five. In science, we need to focus on students' interpretation of data in various models. We need to continue to work on hands-on, real-world experiences for our students. And we need to pair that with instruction in ELA and strategies so that students can clearly articulate their claims and support their claims with evidence. Really, we need to focus on writing across all our subjects and higher-level, more complex materials for our students. I'm going to turn things over now to Jen Paschrell, but I also want to thank Guy and Liz, who are with us tonight. While they didn't present, they're certainly part of the team and have been invaluable to our school, so thank you.
So as we reflect on all of our achievements, we recognize that our instructional takeaways are the very foundation of the work that lies ahead of us to continue to develop our students and to push them towards excellence. Our next steps are clear, they're purposeful, and they're guided by the commitment to enhancing student outcomes and opportunities. It should be noted that while we're working across all five buildings, this is also a K-5 endeavor. And work that has been rooted since kindergarten is now starting to come up through the system. So we are really seeing not just the backlogging of this type of work, but we're really seeing kids coming from the ground up with this. So we're really excited, as I said, to see where this goes. We will continue with our professional learning initiatives, maintaining the momentum we have built and ensuring that our teachers remain at the forefront of best practices. We are going to intensify our focus on targeted, constructed, and extended responses in English, language arts, science, mathematics. And we're going to provide students with the opportunities for critical thinking skills so that they can achieve mastery. Our commitment, excuse me, to pushing more students to mastery remains paramount. We're not just looking at where we're achieving or where we're lacking. It's about pushing everyone at every level to that next step. And we will continue to refine our approaches for each learner. The remarkable work that is happening through our MTSS framework, our win-period implementation activities, development of inquiry-based units, explicit small group instruction, all represents the dedication of the amazing teachers who demonstrate the unwavering trust in our leadership and their commitment to continually improve their craft as well as showing up daily for the whole child, academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally. That is what makes us most proud. Rockville Center has been a place where expectations are high, but there is a lot of support provided, and it's very timely that it is the, you know, national recognition of board members because, as I think Dr. Freiling mentioned before, it really does start with the support there, not just in what we do, but how we do it, the process that we do it, the financial backing for what we do. And it's just, I think it's a great example of the collaboration that really is at every level. So we thank you very much for allowing us time and space to share these results, and we look forward to any feedback that you might share, and of course, for another great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for the presentation. Comments and questions from board members?
Yes, I'll start. Thank you so much. I'll use my teacher voice also. I wanted to hit on one of the earlier comments about how this unified approach, it's certainly been a goal of this board and our superintendent since he arrived, to make sure that all five elementary schools are aligned, right? That no matter where your family lives, what elementary school you might be zoned for, you are absolutely assured that your child is getting a quality education. And so I really do appreciate all the work that's gone into aligning each of our K-5 experiences for our students. And to the point where we see literally every number going in the right direction as we see across not just K-5, but even every building, as Mr. Zapia mentioned, moving in the positive direction. Typically, when we see that sort of dramatic improvement, this is not just the response of one particular initiative, right? This is a lot of different targeted initiatives coming together. And I wonder if any of you would be interested in speculating if any of those interventions or programs or developments you maybe have seen to be particularly effective?
I think it's everything. I think it's the MTSS plan that we put together. I think it's the inquiry units that were put together. I think it's everyone working together as a team. I think that us working together as a team spills into the buildings and our grade levels wanting to work together as a team. They share more now than they ever had before. They're in communication more now than they ever had before. They're sharing best practices more than they ever had before. We have Superintendent's Conference Day in a couple of weeks, and we're excited for all the things that the teachers will be doing together. So I think just, rather than be five separate elementary schools, and we kept our personalities, that was important to us. Every school is different. We still kept those. But we all think that there are certain experiences the kids should all have, especially when it comes to curriculum and instruction. So I think all the things all together have all benefited, and the support of the central administration that we have also has been great.
Yeah, and to that end, the next question I was going to ask is, it certainly takes time to analyze all of this data, to triangulate for each child all of these various scores where there's overlap. Do teachers, do your buildings feel that they have enough time to really dig in?
No, nobody has enough time. I wish I could say, "We have enough time." No, I don't think any teacher would stand in front of you and say, "I have enough time." But we find the time. We set aside as much time as we can. Our morning meetings help. Our meetings after school help. Our professional developments help. Us popping into classrooms and sharing things help. But I wouldn't pick one teacher that would tell me, "I have plenty of time." Yeah, but it is time-consuming.
Yeah, just to add also, I think that from this data, we now will start to meet with our teachers. We have our coaches in the building. So all of those conversations that happen, in particular with our school-wide data teams, we're looking at this data together. So part of those conversations that we lead give them lenses that they can go back and look more deeply into individuals. When we start to share the data, we share it as a district, and right away, we want our individual. Give me my data. You know, it becomes a real instructional tool. So the kids change, the tests change, but at the end of the day, it's really about growing and learning. So that graphic that explains that, right, inquiry, reflection, analysis, that is something that I think everybody works hard to do.
Thank you. And then my last question is just from a parent perspective. If parents have questions about any of these test results or anything in particular, would you... I know we've got parent-teacher conferences. Any other resources that we can point parents to?
As always, start with the teacher. So first line of defense is always to go to the teacher. And then if the teachers need help, they come to us. We have all the data and access to everything, and we could always jump in. But I always think if there's any issues that parents have, always go to the teacher first. I don't want them to feel like they're bypassing the teacher to come to us. Teachers are very knowledgeable on those things, but we're always here to support and have everything we need.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. First, I want to commend everyone, you guys, but also all of the teachers. There's clear progress that's being made, and so everyone should feel really good about that. And I also love a few of the things. And I also love a few of the things that you pointed out, just continuing to push toward mastery and having high expectations and trying to get everybody to rise to those expectations. And, you know, our science improvement is great. The fourth-grade ELA, if you look at them as a cohort, they made like huge progress in achieving level four improvement this year, so that was fantastic. And I also really appreciate what's included in this presentation, which I feel like is a little bit newer, is the clear instructional takeaways. I think that's a really important thing to connect what the data is going to actually translate into in the classroom. So thank you for including that as well. A couple of questions or comments. So the Fonda's and Pennell data, I'm sure you guys share the same concern that I do. If you look at the number of kids who seem to be sort of staying in that below or approaching level, not to say that it's, we're not attempting to address it, but it concerns me that, like, you know, 20-ish percent of our fifth graders in particular are going to head to middle school. And the thing that's interesting also in your instructional takeaways is a lot of it has to do with literacy, whether it's math or ELA, like the word problem seems to be a problem. So those two things combined make me a little concerned for kids being able to handle, you know, more classes, harder work, more to keep track of. So can you just speak a little bit to that?
And I think it's important to realize that that is one measure, right? We don't want to ever look at one piece of data in isolation. We want to combine it with other pieces, whether it's classroom assessments. We want to look at the NWEA. We want to look at the New York State tests. And when we do have our school-wide data meetings, we are looking at all of that together, K-5, three times a year, you know, at the building level, which can literally take an entire day with the principal, with the AIS team, our psychologists who come together. But specifically with FNP, it's important to note it is, you know, a formative assessment. It is, there is room for interpretation, right? Because, you know, it's an experience, an exchange between a child and a teacher. There's conversation going on. It's not the same experience as reading a passage, clicking a multiple-choice question. So I think that there could be a little subjectivity, to be quite honest, in a student's responses. And to be very honest, it's a gradient of levels. It's not a science. And I have seen, as a reading specialist, students who are able to read books that might be at a higher level that are not within the FNP system. It's not a perfect system. It's a starting place. I think that there's value in it, but it's not the end-all, be-all. Again, when we have two texts, let's say at a text level P, right? And a child may struggle and come out at the frustrational level. I can go into another set of books from another publisher at that same level, and that child comes out proficient. You know, it's not as cut and dry as, let's say, a Lexile system, which the NWEA does use.
I think also on top of that is, when we see scores like this, and we start to kind of peel back the layers, this is where our MTSS system comes in place. When we sit and we look, there are different benchmarks that pop kids into our radar, and we look at them and we talk about them. Sometimes it's an anomaly, like Michelle just explained. Sometimes it's a place where we learn we have to target instruction, and that allows us to move into a tier-two or a tier-three support, depending on the student. So while, yes, it would be great if everybody was, you know, with those blue lines, and the reality is, is kids learn and grow at different levels. So different kids need different things at different times. So when we sit down and we make those decisions, the teachers there, the AIS support teacher, the psychologist, we are, and we have questions that we are asking to try to figure out what's the best way to support those children at that time. So yes, while they're there, it is addressed in terms of being able to, again, move everybody from one level to the next.
I appreciate that. I'd also, like, I hear what you're saying. I don't think the, like, the New York State data is that different. Like, we're about 20% at level one, level two. Which is where, I mean, I understand that's just a fact of life. I guess my follow-up that I had wanted to ask is, is there anything that, if there's general concern, like there are articles being written about problems of literacy just in general in young children. And so part of what my question is, is is there more we can be doing to connect with people, parents at home, and encourage different behaviors at home that could help reinforce or even create the conditions so that you're not seeing, you know, kids struggle as much? I think that's like a missing link that perhaps we could...
I wanted to say, yes, and we do provide opportunities for students. We're not just targeting our at-risk learners, right? We're looking at our learners that are on grade level and above to stretch them, to enrich them. I could give you an example. Well, you know, Mr. Duffy said, "We are unified as five buildings. We're following the same inquiry units." But each building does take on its own other activities. I could speak to Covert in that the fifth-grade teachers do a genre-of-the-month study. So while we know, and as a mom and a parent of two children who, as a reading teacher, my kids, they weren't lovers of reading. Science and math were more their area. So for me, as a mom, I was delighted when, like, the teacher would say, "This is a book you want you to..." You know, when it came from the teacher, they would actively read. So we have found that through this genre of the month, we're getting some kids excited to find a genre that they like, because sometimes it's about finding that fit of what do they enjoy, what makes them want to pick up a book and read, right? And it doesn't have to just be a novel, right? We want to move beyond the graphic novel. Let's tap into some type of informational text. So I'm with you, I understand. So I think that things like that kind of bridge that gap from home to school. Yeah.
I also think that we talked about each building having its own, right, unique culture. So while there are consistencies across the board, and I'll just speak about at Watson, each year we have an enrichment night, in which we focus specifically this year on the art of communication and oral language and written language and how words matter, and putting down technology and kind of combining those ideas. So whether it's partnering with our PTA, or whether it's having these types of events at schools, or what we're pushing through our clubs, these are all the ways in which we are trying to involve parents. Equally, in our MTSS system, part of the conversation, I'll go out on a limb and speak for everybody, that is happening is what can we give parents when we have a child who's struggling? Can we replicate the foundations cards so that, you know, they could do them at home? And if mom and dad aren't available, do it with a stuffy. You know, these are the types of ways in which we're trying to get kids to also buy into, "Learning is hard, and it takes work." So to your point, yes, we know some kids have a little bit more support from home, but it's all this enmeshing, and it starts PBIS and letters home and losing parents from all the things kind of coming together. And I think what we have found is that each year, when we layer more things on that we're doing, it just feels so much more cohesive. So again, I think that from a parent's perspective, there's consistency, there's a clear path and progress, and them being partners in that, I think, helps. But again, it takes time and consistency.
Yeah, I agree. Just one other clarifying question. What is the difference between book clubs and guided reading? Are they the same, or do we not do guided reading anymore?
We call it small-group reading, and we call it book clubs. And typically, it's in our three, four, or five, it's our more in a book club, where they're reading a shared text, and they're having, write novels, right? And they're having more like conversation, almost like a book club that an adult might engage in. Where small-group reading might be a little bit more geared towards skills, decodables, and working more on things like fluency that Michelle had spoken about, right? Fluency, their phonics, decoding, things of that nature.
Appreciate the clarification. And then just one final thing. So I saw on one of the last slides, you had a bullet about executive functioning, and I know this isn't really a data comment, but just in general. So my youngest has now transitioned into sixth grade, and she's my third one through, but her classmates, a lot of them are first-timers through. And there's, it's always a learning curve, I get that. And I kind of tell people, eventually, they all figure it out, it will be okay. But, and I know you've improved this over the past couple of years, but that transition from fifth to sixth, if we could just look at it, particularly in the spring, like giving them a little bit more of a taste of what sixth grade is really going to be like, while they have the safety net of fifth grade to do that, I think just would make a difference for kids, but also for families as they're transitioning into that new experience. So, thank you.
One thing I just wanted to touch on very quickly is last year at Hewitt, and we've been talking about this amongst the buildings, making it like a more unified, almost like a parent-university approach. In the spring, we partnered with Malloy and did a parent literacy night, and we invited all of the parents in and introduced them to the science of reading. We did a mini, like, parent course on it, and then we showed them all the different curricular programs that we're using. So we taught them a lesson as if they were their children now. It wasn't like a chalk-and-talk, like we're showing them the curriculum. They sat there like they were a true first grader, a true kindergartner. They learned about the Hopman method as if they were their third grader doing a kernel sentence. And we found that so valuable, because then they knew how to teach their kids, because they learned it as if they were their child.
That's fantastic.
So that's like what we're moving towards and working towards at the elementary level. It was kind of like a pilot last year, and that's something we're interested in, and doing that similarly to math and playing math games, but playing as if you were your child. And executive functioning, that's something we're looking at training the aides in, and we're actively working on trainings in that, because we have found that so viable, and it's something we talked about during the strategic planning process.
Appreciate all of that. Thank you so much, everyone.
Mr. Zappia, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, you know, part of our MTSS plan is really deliberately involving the parents into the process. I think we value, we've always valued, you know, parental input and being a team. But I think something that's wonderful about the MTSS plan is that it deliberately does so. So we have teachers engaging in phone conversations right now with parents, inviting them in for meetings, like Ms. Pascarella spoke to, speaking about strategies with them, you know, individual strategies that are being used in the classroom that could be used at home. So I think, you know, the MTSS plan, not only is it involving parents, it's being done across the district and all five buildings. It gives us that common language that we can use when talking to each other, when teachers are engaging with conversations with each other, and now parents have that common language also. So I think deliberately, you know, following that MTSS plan, involving parents into the conversation, doing so in a deliberate way, and giving them strategies that we're using in the classroom, has really given us great benefits to the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you all. You're like a dream team, honestly. It's amazing work, and it's great to see. And I think to Janet's point, when you read articles about ELA results, you know, across the country being low, and New York State, they're doing specific articles in Newsday about, and you click on it, and you hold your breath, and you think, "Oh, let this not be us," right? Because we want to see our kids always doing as best as they can. And so even with falling rates in certain areas, watching Rockville Center and that blue line across the board is just a real, like you said, a pride point, and very appreciated. I really also want to thank you for the cohort analysis, the longitudinal look. I think it's really important. I know we've talked about it before, so I just want to say thank you for incorporating it. I think it is important to look at that. And I also am noticing, besides your collaboration, just that kind of multi-tiered approach of assessment, and that's important, too. A few years ago, we were looking at NWEA exclusively, and now we're expanding, getting more students to take the New York State tests, so we're having more data to work with. And so, Michelle, what you said is spot on. I mean, there's just a lot of nuances to some of the data, but at least we have more to work with here. So all of those things, just thank you for all of that. So I guess my two questions really just come from that kind of approach of everything. As we are assessing our assessments and how we're looking at this, is it giving you any new intel into what our report card system should look like? And not so much, like, when I was a kid, the report card was, "Are you doing well or not? Is there a slap on the wrist to be found here or not?" We don't want to use it this way. But to, you know, the points being made about communication tool, if a report card could be a standard for, this is what we're noticing, and so if we're in this improving, it's not to slap on the wrist, but to say, "We're working towards this." So I'm interested to how it's maybe informing your thoughts.
Sure. So part of our strategic plan came out that we're going to do an assessment review, which is kind of already started. But I've already met with Guy and Liz yesterday or two days ago, and we started our first real conversations about evaluating our current report card and what that could look like in the future, and how we would go about doing something like that. So we're reaching out to our teachers soon to talk about what is it that we like about the current report card? What changes would we like to see? And most importantly, what do we want to communicate to parents? Because that's really what the report card should be. What is it you, as a teacher, want to be able to tell your parents, and what should that look like? So we are collecting report cards from other local districts, we're thinking about how we want to communicate to parents and what that should look like. And I would think over the next two years, we'll probably have a new updated report card, K-5, and we've already begun the work.
That's great. And I think it's important, because I agree, it's a communication tool more than anything else, because you're already doing so many different things to assess where the students are. And just one of the other things that I agree is like the branching minds where all of our data is going. You can follow students from year to year. Certain assessments also give you, like, line graphs on where students are throughout the trajectory of taking an exam. So you can see kids that have dips at the same time of year, or if, again, the trajectory is going the right place. So we do have other ways right now to really be able to speak to, over multiple grades and years, how students are progressing. That's great. So, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. I think that's important. I don't know, I haven't seen an elementary report card for a while, but just feeling like we're moving...
I think it's the same as it was the last time you saw it.
I'm imagining, but I wasn't sure. But since we're evolving, it just makes sense to me that it evolves alongside of the work that you're doing.
Agreed.
And also, I know we're looking at data here that's showing, you know, progress within an academic year. I'm interested to know what the summer slide's looking like across the board, how are we doing in general? And with our kind of cohesiveness, do we have a kind of standardized summer approach for elementary buildings that, you know, when you're going into eighth grade, here's your list of books, or whatever it is, and that when you get into eighth grade, you take, you know, this ELA project? Do we have a kind of a standardized elementary approach this summer?
Some, but it certainly has room for improvement. So there were times that we handed out packets to students to take home. We moved to an electronic system of that. We do different things, like reading on the lawn and other events, but we, yeah. And students have access to different things on their Chromebook and different programs. But I don't, I agree with you that we could do more and we could have a better summer approach.
I mean, it's so great, our ACE program's so strong, but not everybody avails themselves to it, or they go to some other camp, or don't go to camp at all. And, you know, making things accessible for every student, whether or not they are, you know, able to afford the program or do the program. Because I know that we have lots of great choices within ACE for literacy and other things, but I think that would be helpful, just to make sure that we have something to offer every student as they're approaching the next grade, regardless of what school they go to.
I think we all agree, so thank you very much.
And again, thank you so much. It was amazing data, and really, we should be really proud of it, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Simone, really happy to see the progress, and really happy to hear about the new systems that we have in place that are really driving the progress. So appreciate all the work that's been done, and that will continue to be done. I had a couple of just general comments and a couple of questions. Similar to Mrs. Gruner, I also was noting with regards to reading through both FNP and ELA, again, just that concern that we do have 20 to 25% of students who are not at grade level. I understand, you know, we're speaking into that, I don't need to speak into it again, but that's just a concern for me.
And you're not wrong. We want to see all of our students reading at grade level. And when we look at what looks like about 25% of our students who aren't where they need to be, we have 6% who are just about there, and then we have the other 18 who are almost certainly going to be in a tier-three reading program, or they're going to have an IEP, or they're going to be receiving some kind of supports to help get them to where they need to be. But we want all of our students to be reading on grade level.
I wanted to just make one other point. While we're showcasing our benchmarking data, which occurs, actually, we do fall, winter, and spring, we're showing fall to spring. If I were to show you our data sheets that we all have access to from our math, from our math team and at each grade level, you know, through our inquiry units, there are summative assessments, formative assessments, that, you know, are extensive ELA assessments that...
ELA assessments, that mirror Lexiles within the NWEA, within the New York State assessment. We've got science and social studies data. We've got our, you know, foundations unit tests, we've got HEGRE assessment. So there's so much more that's layered in. And while we're just showcasing this benchmarking of these three pieces, there's just so much more that we look at globally. So again, I don't, I wanted to just make it clear, while, yes, when we look at this, we're looking at this specific one piece of data, but then I can take a student who may be, you know, approaching on F and P, yet look at their summative assessment data, and they're at that 80% benchmark or higher. Depends on the type of test, like I say that with the NWEA. For some kids, the clicking on the computer is not, does not showcase necessarily what type of student they are, especially if there's some impulsivity involved, right? That's where sometimes we see a little bit better results on F and P, or vice versa. So I think it's just important to look at the big picture.
There's always the whole picture.
Yeah.
But that statistic, because it is similar in both, is what was concerning to me.
Yeah.
And I guess along with that, I have a question. So I know that we use the NWEA as one of our key benchmarking or assessment tools. I'm wondering if there are any other programs, I know there are many districts who have started to move away from NWEA towards I Ready, for example, which, where NWEA is comparing you to peers, where, again, if we're seeing nationally a decline in literacy rates, even though we're still above the norm, it could still, we could still have a decline in literacy rates, but we're not seeing that on the NWEA, because we're still performing better. Whereas I Ready is looking more at specific grade-level skills and targeting where the child is in relation to that skill. So it feels like, and again, I don't live in this world, but it feels like a much more true representation of where there is or could be deficit, and then within that, aligning to our MTSS program, where we do have win period, where we do have times where children can work with groups independently, it feels like that data might be a bit more applicable to really helping kids hammer down the skills, the content, that they need to really improve. So it's a question, have we been looking at changing that switch?
So, well, two things. Number one, we are investigating. It was one of the things that we've talked about for our strategic plan, that we wanted to look comprehensively at our assessment, and how we assess all of the different skills. So we originally started by looking at the report card. That was one of the charges for elementary in specific. The assessment component is something else that we're looking for. We have had conversations about I Ready as a possible system. I know that many of us have come from, if the people that have come from other districts have experience with other types of systems. So that, that has been an ongoing conversation. That's number one. Number two, you know, the other component for that is that we want to make sure that we're having an alignment with not only the assessments that we're putting together, but our report cards as well, so that they complement each other. So that we, we're not, you know, re-changing everything and then coming with a new system, and then they're not working together. So our conversation starts with, what are the things we want to communicate to parents through the report card and through the data that we capture, right? What are the values that our parents have told us, and how do we communicate how our students are doing to those values and the skills that they have, the skills that we want to assess according to New York State standards? So that was a component of that. The other piece of this is APPR, and that, NWEA was originally brought because of the APPR legislation. That legislation is changing, but it's part of a negotiated process that has to happen by 2033. So that's one of the things also that we've been talking about, like, the NWEA started as a secondary assessment that was known as a local assessment. New York State assessments happen one way, but they, because of the law that requested multiple measures, excuse me, required, not requested, multiple measures, NWEA was a testing system that a lot of districts went to, including mine and my previous district. We went with NWEA as well. The, the positive with that is that you're against the national norm, but your point is very well taken in terms of if the national norm is changing, what do we want to be measured against that with? So that is, you know, a long answer to your question, that, yes, the conversations have started. No, I don't have a definitive recommendation for you at this point, but this is something that we thought of as part of the strategic plan, of something that's going to be really important for us to define as we go forward.
I appreciate that. I think it's always good to be looking at what we're doing, and if there's a system that's going to help us identify and help students in a way that's, you know, better, we should be there. The other question is related to vertical articulation between middle school and elementary school. You know, over the last few years, we've had a lot of change in standards. If we could take science, for example, there's been, you know, a lot of new standards, and it has really refrained the entire way that science is going to talk. So do we have conversations between the middle school faculty, where they're identifying, like, what's going well, what are the deficit areas, and then how do we address that at the elementary level? I know each grade obviously has their own things they're supposed to think about, but, you know, potentially at the middle school, or, you know, high schools, middle school, we're going to see areas that kids are struggling in. Do we have those conversations?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We could, we could do more, and we do it better in some places than in others. The ones that I've been involved in have been more around math, and I don't, and the other sub, and literacy as well, but we could probably do more around science and around, around social studies. Did you want to jump in?
So this year is, is a, is a science review year for us. So, so these are conversations, I know we've done it with mathematics, and we want to bring this to science, with all content. We want to have that, that transition from the elementary level to the middle level, because it is probably, I, I also have a child that just went into the sixth grade, so it's probably one of the hardest transitions in K-12 is that elementary to middle school level. So it's such an important component, and we've been doing that with our elementary math team and our middle school math team. We want to bring that to the rest of the disciplines as well. I, that's definitely something that's, is going to be done.
No, I think it's important, because those, those things at the middle level, we'll be able to pinpoint specifically where there's seen deficit, and even hearing from the kids about what feels easier, where they're feeling struggle, I think just to inform that continuum.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then my very last question goes back to pre-K. Again, because we have pre-K, I would really love to see pre-K being here, that we're pre-K 12 different. And just thinking about, like, with regards to literacy, like, I am in no way, shape, or form of a commitment of, you know, having kids know all their letters in pre-K. Like, children should be children, and that's important. Like, it's too much too soon.
Every single level, in my opinion, but that's my opinion. But I, I do think it's important to think about what are appropriate early literacy skills that are happening there. And then for our kids who don't come to our pre-K, to Mrs. Gruner's point, how will we also then spreading it out to those, those students so that they have access? And that's it. Thank you very much. Great progress. Really proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Great job.
Tonight, as far as policies, we have one policy currently at stage three, 5676. Before we discuss that, Dr. Downing, did you want to just take a moment and discuss some of the policies that we're reviewing coming up at the next meeting?
Yeah, so I can just tell you that the policy committee is meeting once or twice a month, in addition to our regular board event meetings, and so we are, before we bring a policy up to stage one, we want to make sure that we have thoroughly reviewed it with either the Director of Technology, Business, PPS, as well as compare it with Erie Wan Bosse's, and that our attorneys have had a thorough review, just to make sure any of the change in regulations or statutes are reflected in any of the revisions. So you'll see, we're in the 5000s, and we have about another 12. Policy is sort of in the free stage one that we'll be moving through, hopefully, you know, into November, and as we go through the policy manual, credit to Mrs. Elberti for keeping us organized and making sure that every time we bring up a policy to review, that it's been thoroughly vetted and reviewed prior to the entire board looking at it. So we have one at stage three, we have two on approval, and we will have more at stage one as we go through.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Downing and Mrs. Gruner for all your work, and Mrs. Elberti as well. Thank you so much. Are we okay to move policy 5676 to approval at the next meeting? Thank you. We already voted on item K8, so can I have a motion to approve items I-2 to K-7?
Okay, K-10. Go through to K-10.
K-10?
Right.
Okay. K-10.
Then we do the agenda.
Look at you, already. Thanks, Mrs. Elberti. I-2 to K-10, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is November 6, and that will be a regular meeting. Thank you. Have a great night.